City Council, Michael, should we all introduce ourselves to the newcomers?
Yes. Some of those that's in the audience as well, they're either part of SPCP or they're from the Department of Justice Office.
Okay. I'm Liz Allen, Erie City Council President. I did watch the press conference today. I wasn't there in person, but I thought it was an amazing amount of information that was conveyed. Good news about progress that has been made. Now we have the entire report to absorb, so why don't we go around the table this way and everybody introduce themselves so that we know who the people are from the Justice Department too out there. Okay, so we'll start with Ed.
Ed Brzezinski, City Councilman.
Bob Truett, City Councilman.
Joe Schamber, Mayor of Erie.
Hi, Kit Chalberg with the Community Relations Service.
Mike Nolan, Erie Police.
Dan Spizarni, Erie Police.
Michael Outlaw, Community Liaison.
Michael Keys, City Council.
Jasmine Flores, City Council.
Chuck Nelson, City Council.
Very good. So we have a format that we're going to use to find out about this, the findings, and then it's okay then if we have some questions too as a follow-up. So, okay, so whoever wants to start.
I guess I'll start. Hi, good evening, everyone. Members of Council, Mayor, Michael and others, thank you so much for having us to Erie. It's actually my second time. I came when it was a little bit warmer, a little bit nicer as April last time, but I can see the beauty and I want to come back in the summer. So you all have in front of you our written version of the case study that we completed with the Erie Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships Program as well as the Council. And I have, we've also prepared a presentation for this evening that will provide you at least a high level of some of the findings as well as some other information that we wanted to share with you all. So I've been instructed that I'm going to share a screen here. Well, is Frank around? It says... So I mean at this time I'm going to share a screen. Try this. Are we good? All right. So the first thing I'd like for us to, at least to share with you all, is how we broke down the report that you see here in front of you. And I'll follow it very similar in the presentation tonight. So the first thing that we'd like to discuss is an overview of the SPCP program, the work of the SPCP Council, how it's structured and so forth. Then we will get into the case study, and I think what you all will be most interested in is when we get to the findings section. These are some of the outcomes and some of the impacts that we identified through our surveys and through our interviews throughout this process. And then finally, we will close up with challenges and lessons learned. So let's first do an overview of the SPCP program. So some of you, some of you know this, but I want to make sure that we're all sort of operating from the same information. So in April of 2018, CRS delivered the Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships, which is what we call a facilitated dialogue program here in collaboration with the city, collaboration with the police department and many, many community members who came to that, to that one-day facilitated program in April of 2018 at Mercyhurst University. It's coming down for me. It's coming down for me. And so we, in that program, we try to highlight what are the goals. You know, goals are critical to program success. Why were we there? And you'll see up on the screen here, some of the goals for the program are to engage local law enforcement and community leadership in dialogue. And it's really set up in kind of two parts. First and foremost, it's really important to hear from members of the community about what are the issues that they feel are impacting police community relationships, police community trust, police community partnerships and the like. The other part that's critical to the program is we go from identifying solutions to identifying, I'm sorry, identifying issues to identifying solutions. And that's a really critical part of this is hearing from the community, getting those issues out on the table, but then also empowering them through this process to come up with solutions that they feel like are going to work for them. So it's really working towards identifying, you know, local solutions to address local issues. And then, of course, through there, we're really looking at how do we identify, how do we address historical barriers, issues around trust and so forth. So those are some of the goals. So what happened that day in April in 2018 at Mercyhurst was about 80 diverse members of the community came to the university, engaged in this dialogue that I'm describing as well as developing solutions. At the end of it, one of the things that we do as part of this program is identify SPCP Council, which there's a whole bunch in this report that talks about the work of the Council, who's on the Council, collaborators and so, and so forth, which I'll talk about in a minute. But what's really critical is that this isn't a one-day program where people come together and they have dialogue and they feel really good at the end of the day. That's all important, but it's also important that there's a continuation of that work and that there's a mechanism for local communities to continue to engage in this dialogue and continue to have a way to problem solve with one another. And that's really what this Council is about, is that kind of mechanism. The other pieces that came out of that day was four solutions and to four issues that were identified by those community leaders. And you heard some of those today, if you were listening to the press conference, you heard what some of those issues were. Some of them were around education and support around cultural diversity and understanding the local community. Also needing to focus on additional, you know, community-focused policing practices, making sure or doing what can be done to have the police department represent the community, make up of the community, as well as engaging in more outreach. And engagement with youth is another big piece of the issues that came out of the program back in April. So, you know, now that we've talked, you know, kind of given you a little bit of the background, and the other part that I would, I would really stress is, you know, these things take months and months to plan as well. And there's a little bit of information here in the report, if you're interested to read it, about some of the plan, the planning process. There's a whole local planning group that that's pulled together to work through location, how do you get out invites, a whole host of issues that are addressed by that planning group. So, you know, like, you know, like any of these events, to be successful, a huge part of the work is planning upfront. So I also wanted to make sure I mention that as well. So let's, let's talk about the Council. So since 2018, your SPCP Council here in Erie has met on the first Wednesday of every month. I have to say, having done this for quite a while, having a group that has met once a month for four years overlaid with a pandemic, it's pretty impressive. We don't see that very often in our work, so definitely want to recognize that as a success. What is the purpose of the Council? Right, is the purpose of the Council? I said it's a mechanism for communities to continue the work. And it is a mechanism to do that through the voices, including those key, you know, community voices in the implementation of solutions that were developed during the program. Okay, it's also there to increase understanding and communication between community leaders and law enforcement. It's sort of the go-between, the mediator, so to speak. It also acts as an advisor to law enforcement on community relations issues. Really important, acting as an advisor to work with the chief and the chief's office, to work with the mayor, to work with others on what they feel like the pulse of the community is and advising as appropriate. And then, of course, one of the things that we like to talk about at CRS is that it increases local capacity, hopefully to identify and address any future community conflicts or tensions. So it's a proactive mechanism so that we're not constantly, you know, chasing after issues as they arise. Awesome. So let's talk about, that's sort of the, you know, the purpose of the Council. So let's talk about here in Erie, the Council members, and then we'll talk about collaborators here right after that. You all can see lots of members from, as far as who makes up the Erie SPCP Council. These are all the groups we would expect to see, having done these programs in other cities. City and police leadership is critical, the district attorney's office, of course, local organizations and advocacy groups like the NAACP. Here, the United Clergy of Erie, the New American Council, the LGBTQ+ Advisory Council, Latino community members, youth leaders. Pretty impressive list, a pretty exhaustive list of the various groups from within the community. But what's also important to know is that the Council, in terms of how we talked to folks and what we learned from them, was they didn't do their work in isolation. They did their work with many, many other collaborators, which you see up here on the screen, on Booker T. Washington Center, the King Center, YMCA, and so many, so many other organizations to do this work. I'll give you just a second. It's a long list. So let's talk a little bit more about the work of the Council. One of the things that we found in doing this impact case study with the Council here in Erie was they decided to divide their work up in a pretty unique way. They created subcommittees, created committees to focus in on particular areas from the issues that they learned from the actual program. And you see the three committees here. The first is the Dialogue Series to Build Trust Committee, the Snack Patrol Committee. When I first heard this, I didn't know that it was an actual real thing, but Michael schooled me and told me, yeah, I know a snack patrol. It's a real thing. Super creative, by the way. And the Answer the Call Series was another committee. And Michael, this morning in his remarks, he broke each one of these down and he did a way better job than I will tonight. But in general, the Dialogue Series to Build Trust is part of the outreach work, is to go and engage with young people to try to understand their perspective, to try to understand what it is that the city, thank you, what the city and the police department can do to better understand youth and to gain their perspective. Is that accurate, Michael?
Absolutely.
All right, I like it. The Snack Patrol is exactly as it sounds. There is a local business owner who donated a vehicle to work with the Council to go around and engage youth through giving them snacks, to go out and, you know, put a smile on their face and bring a little bit of a different name and flavor to what they would normally assume or would be, you know, engaging with, you know, with community leaders or with law enforcement. And then finally, the Answer the Call Series is a series related to the issue that was identified around how do we, how do you locally, how does the SPCP Council, working with the city and the police department, diversify the police department in a way that is more reflective of the community? So being aggressive in that outreach, having people understand what it is to mean to be a police officer, what it means to work as a public servant and so forth was a big part of what this committee worked on. So the part I think that, I think all of you will find really interesting is, let's get to the case study. So as part of the case study, what I want to do is give you a little bit of background and then we'll talk about some of our methodology, kind of how we put this, this whole thing together. So in May of 2021, almost three years since the program, which was delivered in 2018, we came back to Erie, albeit virtually, given the pandemic, but nonetheless conducted a case study to identify the impacts and the outcomes of the SPC program and of the Council. And these outcomes and impacts were identified, really analyzing data from a couple of different ways. The first way was we sent out surveys to 75 individuals who were either program participants, people who were invited but didn't attend for whatever reason, and then current and former Council members. So we tried to get as many folks who were involved and kind of touched the SPCP program. We tried to give them the opportunity to fill out this survey that I'm speaking of. Out of those 75, 29 responded. 12 of those were Council members, 12 were program participants, and then five who were invited but who ultimately didn't attend. Great question. So a program participant would be an individual who participated in the program in 2018 but wasn't necessarily a Council member or became a Council member. Yeah, great question. So the other way that we collected data was through interviews. So we had our surveys and then we did interviews. So we did eight interviews with SPCP Council members that represented law enforcement and local community leadership. So kind of two parts, how we collected the data again was through surveys and then ultimately through interviews. So let's talk about the findings. And again, I just want to reiterate, you know, this is roughly 30 pages or so. I'm going to hit on some of the highlights, and there's, and there's definitely more for you to look at in here. If I were to go through all of it, you know, we would be here for a long time and, you know, the snow, the snow would roll in and we'd be stuck. So let's first talk about changes in perceptions. This was, I think, some of the most impactful part of the impact case study, and I think something that's important for you all to, for you all to understand is first, we, we look at the perceptions of community trust as, as a first part of this. And so you'll see in 2018, the percentage of participants rating their perceptions of community trust in police as good or very good as 7.4. And then in 2021, raised up to almost 30% at 29.6. So some shift there. Shows a positive shift in the perceptions that individuals have. On the flip side of that, where we also want to see is, we want to see tensions decrease. We want to say if trust is going up, we'll make the assumption that tensions are going down. And we also did see that here. Again, in 2018, you'll see that percentage of participants rating perceptions of racial tensions as high or very high was about 63%. And then in 2021 decreased to about 46.1. Did ask the same people? Great question. So part of the methodology of this study is we had to use what was called, what we call recall data. So what recall data means is that we didn't take an initial evaluation or do an initial survey at the beginning as a snapshot in time in 2018 as comparison to 2021. And that was simply because we didn't know we were going to want to do that at the time. It wasn't something that we had typically set up. But as we learned all the great work that was being done here in Erie and at other places that are doing SPCPs, we realized, you know, we should, we should really be paying attention to some of these outcomes and impacts. And as a start, as a, as a beginning, similar to the way SPCP was a pilot here in Erie, this, this evaluation is very much a pilot in terms of the way we think about it at CRS as well. And going forward, our plan is to then implement that, that pre-survey to have comparison data from year over year over year. So in this study, it is, it is recall data.
So let me just, so you have 29 surveys and they were like, so the people that, you know, half of them are the people that planned the ice cream parties. And then you asked them what they thought of police back, how they remembered police three years ago and how they perceive them now after the ice cream, you know, after the ice cream and the other two areas? That's, that's the methodology?
I'm not following the ice cream.
So you have 29 people. You broke it down into three different categories.
Correct. Would you like me to go back?
Yeah, yeah. So you have 29 responses, 12 of them are from, are Council members, 12 of them are program participants, five of them are invited participants that didn't continue. So those 12 Council members are the people that were planning the three different areas and their subcommittees and stuff. I mean, the people that planned the ice cream parties, you interviewed them after the parties and then said, how did you remember police before this and how do you remember them now? Is that the methodology I'm understanding?
Correct, yes. In addition to program participants and the invited members, yes.
Got it.
Correct.
Can I just jump in because I think you're sort of tapping into program improvement. Correct.
I just want to say that your question's sort of tapping into a program improvement. We identified for future evaluations to get baseline survey data before the program begins so we don't have to use recall data. But because we hadn't done a baseline survey in Erie, recall data was the next best thing to enable us to start looking at documenting these impacts. So I don't know if that's kind of what you were thinking about, why did we need to use recall data?
No, I'm, I'm thinking about like research methods and, I mean, this is falling in the category of ethnography. How do you study a group of people and, and what are the methodologies? And I'm trying to see if there's a, a bias in your 29 people as to that they were the active participants as far as what the perception is. Like, you know, if, if I start a workout program and I go and I go to the gym for one hour and then I come back and say, well, hey, how do you feel? I'm like, my muscles are tight, then I have a bias. My wife will look at me and be like, ah, you're still chubby. And, and she has less bias on that. You're having the actual participants reflect back on the ethnography. And I'm trying to see if there's that confirmation bias.
Yeah. And I mean, certainly when you're asking people, you know, you, you've been a part of the Council, you know, working so hard. You're right, you're going to have that kind of predisposition to see progress. And so that's why we've been very careful in how we phrase the findings. Like, we don't make wide-speaking, it was about... Like, we don't make wide-speaking, you know, wide sweeping findings that wouldn't be statistically appropriate. Like, we don't say, we have proven, you know, these survey responses prove that SBC directly led to these changes in perceptions, right? Like, we've tried to be just very precise about, this is what the survey data shows, and not spin it. We try to be extremely precise. And we, in the future, would actually like to do a broader survey. So we're, this is our pilot evaluation, and we're just so grateful that Erie was willing to work with us on this. But each evaluation, we intend to be more and more rigorous in our evaluation design. And eventually, we would love to be able to do a survey of the whole city. You know, like, not just the people who were in the meetings, right? But we could not do that at this point, based on our, you know, when the government, federal government collects data from members of the public, it has to be approved up through the Office of Management and Budget because of the Paperwork Reduction Act. And it took us about two years to get to the point of approval to do the surveys that we did. So we've been pushing, pushing. We want to do more. We want to be able to make, have more precise findings. But right now, we were not allowed to do a survey of the, like, of an entire city. But in the future, like, we see how we could be more and more methodologically rigorous. But this is, is what we could do to get started, and we think that it does have, you know, carefully worded, right, to not make more of it than it is. We really stand by our findings, and we ran them by, like, the Justice Department evaluation experts, and to be very careful and not say things that wouldn't be holdup, you know?
Are you the, like, the person primarily responsible for the research, then?
Well, I'm the acting director of the agency.
Okay.
And Kit is the person who really drove the design through. But, I mean, we care very much about being as rigorous as possible. We even, you know, I actually took a class, a graduate level class in program evaluation of conflict resolution interventions, to try to be as rigorous as we could within our constraints. And Kit has a master's degree in conflict resolution. So I guess we, we want, we're happy with what we did, very happy with what we did. But it's not to say that we couldn't be more rigorous and do a bigger study that could even have less potential bias and confirmation, you know, bias, of course, is always a factor. But we have this vision of getting better and better and better, and more and more rigorous. And actually been bringing in a evaluation expert to run evaluations in the future. So we, we see, like, there's this, the perfect, well, it's no perfect evaluation, but we're like, we want to get there. But we do feel like we were very careful and with our findings, so that we could, we could do, you know, do Erie proud and be able to say, this is what we found. But, but just be very clear, there's so much more rigor that one could bring, always, right? And in the social sciences, it's, it's tricky. It sounds like you know a lot about it, and maybe you can help us.
Were, were the surveys done each year, or how often were they done? One survey throughout the first?
This is our first, this is our first evaluation.
Four years? For, for, you, you're?
I'm seeing findings for 2018.
So we call the people in 2021 and ask them what they thought of.
After, okay.
Yeah. And recall data is, is considered in social science research. I mean, I'm sure you know, it's, it's a perfectly legitimate form of evidence. You just can't make more of it than it is. You just have to be very clear, this is people's recall data.
Let you continue. Say, we'll let you continue.
I could go away now. I get very excited about this, because I did, like, we did a lot of studying to make sure we could do as good as possible for Erie and for ourselves.
So, uh, maybe, looking into the future, maybe we could even do a third-party neutral survey, and maybe the Department of Justice won't have to earmark the money for it, and maybe as a, you know, as a partnership with someone else. And so that may be one way to get a, a larger survey, you know, initiated and accomplished.
Uh, there's a lot of ways to, yeah, to get good data. And for us, like, CRS and our 50-plus years of working as an agency, we've never done anything like this. And we, we knew that it was really important to be able to tell the story of not just Erie, but other cities that have these kind of important initiatives, to be able to begin to look at impacts, knowing, again, it's so important to not overstate, right? And so, yeah, we're just in it with you guys, just to see what we can, what we could find that might be helpful. We were talking earlier today about, you know, the council's still meeting, you know, if it keeps on meeting and Erie is interested, there's nothing that says we can't come back in another year or two, right? And do it again, or, or have a design that's more rigorous, you know? But we are, we're committed to doing all that we can to look at the outcomes of what we do, because if it's not working, we should do something else, right? If SPCP doesn't move the needle, and, and then we should figure out another program that does, right? So why, we, we have to make sure we're being effective, as effective as we can, and, and you all want the same thing, because this took a lot of hours and hours of a lot of people's time. So that's just kind of where we're coming from, of like, we want to be data-driven and effective and effective supporters of cities. And so many cities don't even try to evaluate what they're doing. And so just to be able to do what Erie was willing to do with us, I think, for us, it's a win, it's a start. And, but yeah, we, we have so many ideas about how to do more and more and more, and it's really a fascinating area of evaluation, like, like trying to do things like measure trust and tensions. It's not, I mean, obviously, it's not easy, right? And it is very much tied to perceptions. And some people have said to us, well, why don't you just count the number of crimes that are committed, or, and we were like, absolutely not, because that's not what we're about, right? We're about the more soft, right, perceptions of trust, relationships, community building, that aren't necessarily tied to things like crime, or, you know, or complaints filed, or going up or down, because other factors could be influencing that. But, but we, I mean, if you, it sounds like you're, you know this area, we would love to just hear your thoughts even later about how to, you know, how to do better.
I want to, I know, I think we want to hear the rest of the, the data here, too. But I think one of the good things about this, well, just to kind of let you know, we have new members on council who haven't been here before, but not, I was at an SPCP meeting, and I was like, why do we have that acronym? Couldn't we make it a, like, an easier thing to grasp?
Snappier.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't communicate, you know, just the acronym. So for some of us, and even though I've been on council, I learned something new today at the press conference, which was that the city actually approached the Justice Department to, to start this. And I think that's important to, to let the community know and council know, because I think even until today, I thought it was something where, we've actually had an investigation by the Justice, Justice Department a few years ago, before SPCP. So that would leave the impression that it was more punitive.
Right, right.
We're going to find out what's going wrong here. So I just thought that was interesting. I didn't even know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm also thinking, and I don't know if it would be possible, but do you know if there was any video of the Merseyhurst Forum that took place all those years ago? I mean, I don't know. I just think, if it's possible to resurrect that, that would be interesting at some point for people to look at, but there were news stories about it, though, so we could go and find those, so. Yeah, so I think Kevin or somebody probably covered it. So I didn't mean to interrupt again, so we'll, we'll let you go back to Kit, so.
No, great, great questions and comments. And when, when you work with the Community Relations Service, everything that we do is voluntary. We are not an arm of the department that does anything punitive, investigations, none of that. That's the Civil Rights Division. So our work is 100% voluntary, and you are correct, it was through Charles Phillips' work in establishing relationships here in Erie, that by invitation, we came back in 2018. And by invitation, continued to do work here in Erie in various ways. So, yeah, no, that's important, that's important to know, absolutely.
And we also are, one of our principles is being impartial, so we don't come in and say, we don't diagnose and say, here's what you need to do, here's the answer. We are very much like sort of the process enablers, and we say, you all decide what will work here. So whether it's body worn cameras or something else, we're neutral, and we're just like, you know, we will help those decisions come up to the surface, but we never, ever suggest what the answer is.
And I, I, not to belabor this, but Snack Patrol, I mean, it, it brings a smile and maybe, maybe a Snicker or Snickers, but anyhow, Michael, I remember, maybe you could let people know, I was at that meeting where somebody who was on the council said, Snack Patrol. Do you remember that? I can't remember who it was, but it was somebody.
Toshawn Taylor.
Yes, yes. And he was adamant that this is a good idea and keep it going. And to me, I might have been kind of like, hmm, Snack Patrol, you know? He, he knew, he said, I'm out there in the community. This works. Don't let it drop. And that, again, being part of that, was a way to realize, you got to listen to people. You can't just go in and say, I know the answers, you know? Why would we want to have a Snack Patrol? But anyhow, now we're all laughing and thinking of Snickers, so I'm sorry. Let's keep going, then.
I'll keep going, all right. I love the Snack Patrol idea. I actually thought, when I first read it, I thought it was an error, and I went back to our, one of our editors, and I said, there's a, there's something wrong here. And then Michael quickly corrected me. So let's, let's continue with perceptions, right? The other area that we looked at was changes in perceptions of what we call police community partnerships. And again, this is an area in, in 2018, you'll see it was right around 7%, and then increased into 2021. Again, recall data, people's perceptions, was that it was different, in this case, improved between 2018 and 2021. The other areas that we looked at was perceptions of relationships with other community groups. This one is really interesting, because, you know, we tend to focus in on the community and police, but we were also asking, how are community groups together? Were they collaborating? And what you'll see here, again, when you look at the perceptions, in 2018, we were right around 70%, and then in 2021, you know, went up to 80, 85. So it shows, again, perceptions are, you know, that there was an improvement in the relationship across groups, which, when you, when you reflect back on the members who are on the SPCP council and all those collaborators that we talked about a couple of slides ago, you know, it really demonstrates on how those connections were being made and how there was purposeful relationships in order for these things to really work and to move forward. This is one that really didn't change, I think, and I think this is, you know, a testament to city leadership and probably members of council here, and that's the percentage of participants rating perceptions of their relationships with local officials as good or very good. And from 2018 to 2021, it really didn't change. It remained the same. In other words, these individuals felt as though their, you know, their perception was, they have a good relationship with local officials. So I think another thing to take stock of. So the other part that I think is really important for us to talk about is, we've talked about some of these perceptions, we've talked about the council, how we got here, but let's focus in on the four issues, if you remember from the beginning, and some of the actions that was put into place as a result of the program, and then specifically actions that the SPCP council has taken over the last, now going on, you know, four years. So if you recall, the first issue that we had coming out of the program in 2018 was that people felt as though the police department needed education and support around awareness of the community, right? So one of the things, I'm sure this wouldn't surprise you, one of the things that was recommended in the program was training around cultural diversity, sensitivity, sensitivity training, implicit bias training. This was a heavy effort that not only the council took on, but also members of the police department as well engaged in that training. Partnered with a local professor to provide some of this training, as well as participated in, in many, many community events, to get to know the communities that the police department and the, and the city is serving. And then finally, as we've talked about, and this is a word that comes up over and over again, is partnering with local organizations, like the New American Council and the Asian Pacific American Association to build trust and improve communication. And those are just a couple of the groups. Again, when we go back a couple of slides, the number of collaborators is, I believe, if my math is right, it's around 10 more groups or so, so, so pretty significant. So let's look at the second issue. So the second issue, if you recall, we talked about that the PD needed additional community-focused policing practices and policies, right? So one of the things that, that we've, we just talked about here a little while ago was the purchase of body worn cameras for every police officer. And, you know, that, that's something that's relatively common now in, in 2022, but in 2018, I have to say, that's a little bit ahead of the game, to be honest with you, to be proactive in that way. And there were remarks this morning, right before the press con, or during the press conference, rather, that talked about that. The other, the other pieces is, the PD, you know, increased foot patrols, began patrolling in higher, areas with higher concentration of crime. And then again, getting back to this communication and developing relationships aspect, hosted forums to educate the community about what the police department is doing, but also to hear from the community. So having that two-way conversation about what are, what are, you know, conflicts or issues that the community is experiencing, at the same time providing, you know, needed education. So let's look at the last two issues here. If you, if you recall, back at the beginning, we talked about that people believed that the police department didn't represent the diverse makeup of the community, right? So in response, what did the police department and the city do? Well, they hired a full-time recruiter to focus on increasing the department's diversity. One of the things that we learned through this Impact Case Study was that the goal, one of the goals, I know there's probably others, but one of the goals that we, that we learned about was that the department wanted to increase the test takers to 15%. The diversity of the folks taking those tests to 15%. And as of 2020, and I, and I believe beyond, they've, they've exceeded that goal to this point, by about 12 percentage points to about 27%.
You know, frankly, we were pretty frustrated, because we were trying to bring in more minorities and more women into the police force, and we weren't getting any. What we found out was we have to start back when they're younger. And, you know, that's what the Police Athletic League started, and our police are doing great work in that, Tom Lennox, you know, the work he does. But we were very proud that the, the last group that was sworn in last week, as you all know, has two African-Americans. I think that's the most the city's ever hired at one time, to my knowledge. And we're really happy that that's progressing.
And then the final issue is around, centered around youth. And speaking of, you know, speaking of the Police Athletic League, this was a big undertaking in having the members of the department, police officers, and I believe Renee shared with me today, it's something like 60 or so officers, is that, is that right, chief, that's in the Police Athletic League now?
Eighty.
Eighty, eighty. So more than half of the police force, at least that's what I believe the number is. About half is participating in, with youth. So using athletics as a way, as a bridge, to bring folks together and to, and to focus on, you know, something very positive in terms of using, using athletics as a way to, you know, bridge that gap. And then finally, and one of the things that, that I really liked to see was that the council actually kind of put on their own mini SPCP. focused in on police and youth relations. So, you know, went out on their own, replicated this model to an extent in terms of the day of event, to get those voices of those diverse students to try to understand what those issues were, and then move towards solutions that youth can get behind, right, that they can support. So those were the, those were the issues and some of the more actions that the council's been focusing on. So I have a handful more here that I want to share with you. So this speaks to capacities of law enforcement. So what we asked was not only council members, but also program participants, whether they agreed, strongly agreed, and so forth, that the city and police leadership have improved their capacity to prevent and respond to conflicts because of the work of the SPCP Council. Now, Councilman, to get to your point around how council members, yeah, here we go, recognize this here, right? Is that members of the council perceived that that capacity, right, they agreed or strongly agreed that that capacity was there, right, 94%. But what's also important to know, I think, to point out, is that non-council members, at 71%, also agreed, right, that their capacity was there to prevent and respond. So, you know, take that for what it is, recognizing that members of the council are very much involved, they see the work every single day, and they perceive it through a certain lens. And those who aren't also perceive it through a certain lens. But recognizing, I believe, getting those perceptions is equally important to understand in terms of how we're collecting the information and being able to use that information to drive decisions and so forth. Now that we've talked about capacities, let's talk about skills. And we've got a couple of things to share there. So we also asked members of the SPCP Council, as well as the planning group, and I'll share that on the next slide, whether or not they believed that the strategic planning and implementation skills of the SPCP Council's improved over the council's meetings. So in other words, as they were meeting, did they believe that their skills were increasing in order to put these actions into place? All these, all these actions related to the four issues that we just talked about. 90% felt as though that they had improved their skills. Similarly to the planning group, we wanted to know if members of the planning group saw their skills increase over the months of planning before we got to the actual SPCP event. And very similarly, we asked about, you know, their planning, you know, what we call their event planning skills, you know, those things like making decisions about dates and locations and times, identifying facilitators, locations, all these things that go into planning, you know, we wanted to understand, over the course of meeting, do they feel more confident at the end that they could potentially do something like this again? And of course, I would say overwhelmingly, especially with the, with the planning group meetings, that there was something that was reported very positively, both 63 and at 100%.
And I mean, that's something that's really important to CRS, because we're a small agency. We could never support every community in the country or, you know, and so we try to leave the community stronger in terms of ability to, in the future, work on their own to address these kind of issues. Because we, right, we can't be everywhere. And right now, there's only 34 of us to cover the entire country, and we are, we're very small. But we are actually going to be possibly even tripling in size over the next couple of years. But even then, right, we still will never be big enough to cover the whole country, and we have to always be focused on trying to be helpful and then leaving the community better prepared to tackle problems independently in the future, so.
Yeah, the idea of the, of the planning group, as well as the councils, it's sort of a force multiplier effect, right? You try to put pieces into place for communities to be successful as they go forward, problem-solving mechanisms, ways for dialogue, and so forth. So the other part that we asked was that we wanted to know whether or not folks felt as though the council successfully addressed the issues, the tensions, and the conflicts identified during the SPCP program. So we wanted to understand, okay, you did this program, everybody came together for an entire day, everyone invested a lot of time, a lot of resources, and then we identified these issues, and then at the end of the day, you know, were the actions that were implemented, did they actually address the issues that the community identified? And again, here, at 75%, folks agreed or strongly agreed that, in fact, that the council is working to successfully address the issues that were identified by the community. I have a little bit more. Hang with me here. Hang with me. All right. This is continued, the success of the council. So this is something to the conversation earlier around improvement of the program. So one of the things that we, that we want to understand by doing these evaluations is, what can we do better? How can we support, for example, the SPCP Council better in the initial kickoff, a month into their work, a year into their work, and in this case, in Erie's case, of almost four years into their work? So we wanted to know what we could do better. And so one of the questions that we asked of the council members was whether or not they agreed or strongly agreed that CRS provided the tools that they needed. In this case, about 70% said that they did. And then we also wanted to know, not only the tools, but in terms of coming back and working with the facilitators of those council meetings, was our facilitation? Did our facilitation help them advance what it is that they ultimately wanted to accomplish? And similarly here, the council members agreed or strongly agreed at 82.3% that, in fact, CRS's facilitation did help them. So that's, that's good for us to know, because if this number were 30%, we knew that we didn't do a good job. We know that there's a gap there, that we could have done more, we could have stayed longer, we could have provided different and better tools to sustain the work of the council. But in this case, we were able to provide those tools, and then, of course, hand it off to Michael, who, you know, is one of the key facilitators for the council. And would, would people recommend the SPCP program to other towns and cities? We asked whether or not they would. About 96% said that they would. They believed that there was value to the program as well as the value of the continuation of the work that the council was doing, and 96% of them, you know, thought that in fact, they would recommend it. So let's transition to this final piece, which is around challenges and lessons learned. Always things that we want to unpack in order to get better at what it is we're doing, and as well as be able to give feedback to the council as they're doing their work. So some challenges that we identified through interviews and through surveys was a couple of pieces. One around meeting logistics and the other around what we call change management. And meeting logistics are the things that you all know about, right? It's managing meetings, in particular, in this case, with, under the umbrella of the COVID-19 pandemic. How do you find times to get people together? How do you do meetings virtually? How do you do them safely to where people are comfortable and continuing to have these meetings? How do you maintain long-term attendance, right? We know when some of these initiatives kick off, and it's very exciting, and there's lots of energy and momentum, people show up, and then eventually you can see a decline. So that's a, that's a challenge that any group, in my opinion, in my experience, any group that you will see. I would say here in Erie, in general, from this impact case study, we did learn that attendance is pretty strong, and keeping people going on the council, albeit, you know, staffed by, attended by volunteers and staffed by city folks and police folks, people are continuing to show up. So to me, that just demonstrates that they see value in it, and they're willing to give their time. Around change management, these are, again, I think, things that you would expect to see. How do you get buy-in of the work that the council is doing, right? From outside groups, from groups who may not believe in what it is they're doing, or may want them to be doing different things, right? How do you bring those folks along and bring them into this work, because there's plenty of work to go around, right? The other is building relationships and trust with new members. As new members come in and people transition, maybe they move out of town or whatever it is, how do you integrate those individuals into the council to feel part of a group and continue to advance what the group's been working on? And then, of course, communication, you know, we could say that 1,000 times, right? How do you maintain communication, particularly during times of stress, you know, in the community, between the community and the police department and the city and others? So some lessons learned. And, you know, as Jerry talked about, we're constantly in the mode of improving. And so an area that we recognize that we could get better at, having done a lot of reflection, is around the program design. And in particular, it's working on putting together orientation sessions for police officers and for community members before they show up the day of the SPCP program. And in fact, it was because of the program here in Erie that in subsequent programs, we've now do put on orientation sessions for police officers and community leaders. And essentially, what that means is having them understand why they're there. Why were you invited? What are you going to do for eight hours? What is this going to look like, right? When's lunch, right? All the important stuff. So just leveling the playing field for them to know, you know, why they're there, critically important. The other part of it is really working with the council prior to them meeting on focusing in on their relationships as a group, right? The group is very relationship-focused on working between various institutions and the community. So they need to have their relationships solid and need to know one another before they continue to go out and do what can be very difficult work. The other parts are related to the council. Like I said, developing trust and relationships are really important. Meeting procedures are really important. How do you communicate out to the public? Developing yearly goals, using some sort of strategic planning process, we feel is important. Increasing communication to the community, so the community knows what's going on, so that there isn't a silo of work that's happening, but that the community is informed and has some input into the work that the council is doing. And then finally, you know, providing sustained support for the council, whatever that, whatever that might be, whether that might be tools for facilitation, or that might be bringing in an outside trainer, like has been done here, and so forth. And that big Q means, if you have any more questions, we are happy.
I was kind of hoping we could.
We are happy to take them.
Everybody on council mentioned something so far, but Mo, let's go to him, not putting him on the spot. He's a school administrator, so he also, I think, would bring something to the table about the whole, the youth aspect of how. So I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Mo, but I wanted to make sure that we heard your voice also.
I think it's very important, when you talk about youth, that you actually go into the high schools. You talk to the youth, because the perception in the high schools is that they don't like police officers. And that's what it is. I mean, that's, if you ask high school kids where I work at, you know, even today, for example, you know, we have school police officers. Those guys, I mean, most police officers are really nice guys, you know what I mean? And one kid said, oh, Mr. Troop, you're welcome with those popos there, or whatever, you know, it's that kind of thing. And that's just what, you know, that's the, that's the perception that's out there right now. So I would say, when you're doing surveys and stuff, I would see how they feel too, because those guys are going to be in our community in a minute. You know, they're 12, 11, 12th grade. Those are people that are going to be our city members, our community members, so their voice is important.
And how about if we just go around the table too then, and add any reaction or comments or questions as a retired teacher also, so.
A long time ago, yeah. Definitely, it's important. Michael was one of my kids.
Yes, indeed.
At East High, and we've been through the whole diversity thing. At East High, we didn't even know that people were black or white. We were all East High. At East High, we didn't know kids were black or white. We knew we were East High warriors. And it was in the classroom, it was on the athletic field, cheerleaders, whatever. You had to learn that diversity is unlearned as people grow up, and we have to get the young kids. One of the things that really impressed me, and this goes back to last summer, he's like the Pied Piper. They had the young kids in the explorer class, and we were at another meeting, and the kids were walking with, was it Lori? And all of a sudden, they were, mayor! And they all went running to him. It was a beautiful thing. And they, with the police too. And those are the kids that have become our people. And Mo hit it right on the head when he said that we have to change that perception at that high school level. Maybe we got to, of course, you could get hurt playing basketball with high school kids. Believe me, this happened. Anyway, thank you for this.
I, I don't want to ask a question, but I saw that we had a question from somebody watching on Zoom who asked, how are members of the council chosen? And I was going to ask Michael Outlaw if he could address that. But I do know one of the things that I think impressed me, and I've talked about this, you guys know from the most, not yesterday, the Mercyhurst meeting, I did not go to, but the one before that, I'm a big proponent of looking at how, you know, gender and race intersect. And at the most recent meeting that I went to, there were strong black women there giving great ideas from the community and also, I think, from the Department of Justice. So, Michael, maybe you could tell, I mean, I don't think you, you don't want to have a Mercyhurst thing where you have 100 people at a meeting, because you wouldn't ever accomplish anything. So could you kind of answer that question of how members become involved? And I know one of them, I think, was, a most recent one, was that the mayor met somebody, a businesswoman, and invited her to take part. And she was, she was amazing, the, you know, the insights that she had, so.
So what we do, when we do these series, you know, we always extend, you know, an offer for people to join the council. And so those who express an interest and then follow through with the interest, you just, you know, me and Mike talk about it, you know, kind of ask some questions, vet it, and then they, you know, give them a seat at the table. And the lady you were speaking about is Shatira Franklin. She owns that materialistic boutique over in Westbury Plaza. If I could, just real quick, just to respond to Councilman Mo, I call him Mo, we live on Glendale Day, so I call him Mo. But it's true that some students have an outlook on officers that's not favorable, right? But I know within our community, right, when we were growing up, we were encouraged to not be associated with police officers, right? And if you were saw, you know, speaking with an officer, you were viewed in a certain light, you know what I'm saying? So I think in part of those students' response could be that narrative as well, that as a community, we've kind of shunned those who wear the badge and whatnot, you know what I'm saying? So there may be some historical context as well, as to some of their outlooks. But I, but what we learned through this process, when we spoke to those students at Erie High School, we were there, East Middle School, and Strong Vincent, Wilson, and even Collegiate. To be quite honest, one of those kids' biggest fear at Erie High School was they didn't feel safe within the walls, because they said there was too many exits in the building that wasn't protected and whatnot. So did we hear that students, some students viewed law enforcement, again, non-favorable, yes. But that wasn't their biggest, their biggest response when we went to the schools. So nonetheless, we're working diligently to, you know, move the needle. We're definitely locked in, you know, and, you know, we don't shy away from challenges, you know what I'm saying? So, but yeah.
I mean, I, I think the biggest thing is that, because I asked a student one time about if they wanted to be a teacher. And he said, no. And he said, because teachers are snitches. And so they look at police and teachers as people who have to call their parents and tell on them, basically. See, but I think that's changed, because when I was in school and you were in school, I did not look at it like that. If I did something wrong, I knew that I was going to get a call home to my parents. Now they view that as anybody who's in that role that has to report them or on behaviors or things like that is looked at as, it's a, this culture. So that's not only just police officers now.
Right, okay.
I'm saying, they're saying that about, I don't want to be a principal, I want to be a teacher because of that reason.
You have something to add?
I just wanted to speak to that, how were the council members chosen? Because I think that's an important point. And there's a lot of, it's been so much time between now and when we did that. And there's a lot of, it's been so much time between now and when we did that. But the original methodology, or the methodology for doing the SPCP is to have these homogenous groups that are chosen by the planning group when we were planning this back before April 2018. And that was New American, I believe, African-American, Business.
Civil rights.
Yeah, civil rights, so on and so forth. And the council members are self-selected amongst those groups to become council members. So, the original group had representation from each of those homogenous groups. And then, to backfill, as people drop off, the idea is to keep that kind of representation on it. So, just wanted to make that point.
Okay, now we'll have Chuck, and then Jasmine, and then Michael.
So, you don't think the high school kids have four times as much trust in police in the last three years? Just checking. Yeah, I'm excited about the programs, you know, it sounds exciting, you know, and my kids got ice cream from police officers, you know, so that's, you know, I've seen some of the work that's been done the last couple of years, so it's been nice to view.
I really am happy to hear about the Snack Patrol program. Erie definitely has a lot of food insecurity with us being home to a food desert and a lot of low-income, you know, families. So, snacks are definitely not on a priority list when you're trying to make sure you have enough food for all of your family. I also agree with Mo Troop that our young people have a particular view of authority figures. They don't necessarily see them as positive as far as being welcoming, I feel as though, but then they also don't see themselves in a lot of those figures. I'm somebody who, I went to Piper Burley all throughout grade school and Perry Elementary. And Ms. Lee was my librarian, and she was one of the only African-American teachers I would see. And she wasn't even a teacher, she was a librarian. So, I think that that is definitely still something that is a problem with our young people. So, we need to really be genuine when we're talking about representation and inclusion just because as a young person who's only 28 years old, our school district does not have a lot of people of color, whether that be African-American, first American refugee, or, you know, Latino, you know, native, anything of the sort. The numbers are very low. So, I'm very pleased with the two officers that we hired, but there is lots of work to do just because it was only two. And we don't have a lot of young people wanting to be officers who are people of color, especially not from the city. So, there's just lots of work to do, and I'm hopeful that we can do that, but we'll see where we go from here.
We discussed privately on the email, Read Across America. What's the officer participation like on that?
That's, it's not department-wide, it's, I'm not sure where I think.
Chief, I can help you with that. Reading Across America is from the school district. So, Ms. Luca Roddy, as an example, over at Grover Cleveland, sent me an email to read, okay? Well, unless they feel comfortable enough to call the chief or whoever.
He's doing it.
Connection's not there. Yeah, he's doing it, is what I'm saying. I didn't understand your question.
There's other members of the command staff that have been invited. We've been to the different schools to read.
Yeah, cool, just curious.
And I wanted to address that too, if I may. I'm a community member, Tammy Johnson, and I'm an advocate for the community and have been my whole entire life, not even just my adult life.
And Tammy, tell them where you're from, what you're working with.
Oh, I'm sorry. Currently, I work for SafeNet, and I'm an advocate for SafeNet. And so, the intersectionality that was spoken about earlier is very important to me, both as a female and a person of color and in the LGBTQ community. So, for me, it's really important. I've been marking down some of the questions that you had, and I did take notes, but I wanted to address the issue of Read Across America. This council has been put together, but some of this work was done prior to this council, and we didn't necessarily have the statistics. So, while you're asking about the command staff, there's also things that police officers do on their own private time or as a subcommittee on their specific job route. So, the City of Erie Police Department has been doing Read Across America for a few years, and they've been connected with JFK and, was it, the Urban Community Center on 20th Street and doing it there for at least, I don't even know how many years, because I can go back to. They've been having stuffed animals in their cars. I don't know, Chief, who started that whole thing, but they have, somebody's wife on the police department said kids need stuffed animals when the police come to the house because they're scared of them. So, the kids have stuffed, the police officers have stuffed animals in their car. And this was prior to this council. But then, as coming on to this council, some of your questions about like the numbers and such and how they relate it, I don't know if you missed the part where they were saying that some people are no longer in the council and some people are at it. I was at it during all the hype of the George Floyd issues. So, I'm one who's a participant post the original numbers, okay? So, my perception is different than the person I may have replaced that did the survey before because the numbers were the same. So, I just wanted to speak to that. And then, speaking to youth not wanting to be police officers and such, I believe is like Mr. Wrazinski said that, and I still call you that, Mr. Wrazinski said that, that I think it might be steered out of youth. Because I remember Officer Sorsorik with a little Hispanic boy who said that, who was like eight or nine years old, who said that he wanted to be a police officer. And Officer Sorsorik saying to him, "Well, you can be." Now, where that young man is when now that he's 14, 15 years old is a whole different issue. But when he was eight or six, he said he wanted to be a police officer because the police officers were kind to him, that he knew. So, how, the question more that we see as the council is how do we retain that type of connection with the young folks once they get to the high school level? And the same thing as teachers. They see them reading books, and they have teachers that they love when they're young, and they want to be teachers. But then, all of a sudden, it's steered out. And I hate to throw you under the bus again, but as a teacher, when you were coming in and you had the little elementary school boys, they wanted to be like you. But now, they're grown men, but they're not like you, you know? So, it's a whole issue of how do we get that retention going as far as maintaining that whole idea? Because I grew up seeing where I live in Baltimore, seeing African-American police officers, African-American fire department, African-American EMTs and flight nurses and all the, and hospitals and doctors and across the whole board. So, yeah, there's a lot that we can do there, and there's a lot to unpack in that, but I think that, and how we can do that is a big deal. But I think that it's really important that we see that the police were doing this before. This is kind of like giving a highlight to what they do and then asking us as community members how well we partner with them. And then, the second part of you saying about the trust factor. I am a certified EMT and firefighter and have been for 20 years. And I was one who was skeptical, skeptical, because my testing process was a little slighted back in those days. So, I was one of those ones that said, "What are you doing for women? What are you doing for women of color? What are you really trying to do to get us to be a part of what you do?" My best friend, who's a white woman, I shouldn't say best friend, very good friend, who's a white woman, was a police chief who grew up over on Linwood with us, right? And yet, I couldn't become a police officer or firefighter. So, and I could outrun her at the time. So, I didn't get it, right? So, it's about how do we make those things continue as we go forward?
Tammy, and then I'm going to ask Michael, and then Nekan, I'm going to call on you too, if you could come up after Michael has his questions. She can go first? Okay. Because I was with you, what day was that, Tuesday night? If you could just tell everybody, I think this would be a good time to put in a plug for the new after-school programs that are going on, but also relay, when you ask the kids, what did they want to be when they grew up? These are mostly refugees and immigrants. I think they were all refugees and immigrants. Doctor and police officer. And again, these were young kids though, but if you could tell everybody about what we went to the other day and what's going on out there? Because I think now we have a forum, maybe we can get some more tutors, so.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Nekan. So, a lot of time, refugees and immigrants, we come from a country where law enforcer or even people in uniform are seen as authority that maybe in their home country abuse of power, abusive, and then corrupt. So, they're afraid to approach police officers. But after this SPCP council was created, the dialogue between the police and the community started, that changed the perspective of my community. People started to feel safe instead of afraid of seeing a police officer. Now, the community would be willing, like, "Hey, I have an event in my community, will the police officer be willing to come?" Or, for example, something that is big that may not happen here in Erie, like the bomb that happened in New Zealand. The Muslim community was terrified. Nobody wanted to come to the masjid, to the mosque because of that, they're afraid. But the police was willing to come to their fijil, to our fijil, and that created a safe. And they feel like, "Okay, the police here to help us." And then, another time earlier this 2020, when the pandemic started, there's a lot of increase, there was an increase of attack toward the Asian community. And we, we had a dialogue between the city, the police department, and some of the city council members was also invited to attend a discussion, listening session with the Asian community, how they feel, and how can we, the city and the police, help them, make them feel safe. So, we're trying to be proactive. And again, you know, with the Snack Patrol and all those things that's happening, kids feel like, as you mentioned earlier, with the after-school program, now we have a lot of refugee coming in also from Afghanistan. They, I want them to feel that they are here welcomed, that we welcome them here. And yes, some of them, I asked, as you mentioned, we asked five children, what do they want to be when they grow up? Couple of them said, "I want to be a doctor." But three of them wanted to be police officer. And that's because previously, like I had a discussion with them, it's like, "What did you want? What do you want to do?" And it's like, "Well, this is teaching me STEM. They wanted the after-school program teaching about STEM." But they wanted to be a police officer because they want to protect their country. So, and thank you so much, Chief Dan, Deputy Chief Inspector Mike Nolan, for your openness and willingness to get the New American through this and willing to talk with us. And language access, you know, it's a very big deal, and the police was willing to help us understand our challenges because language barrier is one thing for New Americans. Second thing is cultural barrier. Sometimes, people don't want to look at you eye to eye, not because we're afraid of, you know, or we're doing something bad, but this is a gesture of respect. Like, "I'm not seeing you." Like, one time Deputy Chief Mike Nolan said, "Why they're going over there trying to avoid me, there must be some, doing something wrong." "No, no, we're just trying to be respectful to you." Thank you.
Michael Keys, and then we want to make sure we get a word from our police officers too, so.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for coming back to our fair city. And I look forward to the work that you're going to do in the future. And so, I just hope that this is a start. We see, you know, where the baseline is and where in small groups, this is, can be effective. And I guess the challenge is how we make it effective in larger groups and in the larger community as a whole. I know, not from the Department of Justice perspective, but I know from other communities have gone with like civilian attachments to their police departments and public relations departments where, who work full-time on this goal of changing the perception and bettering the relationships between the community and the public at large. And maybe that's something that this administration should look at. There's a few models from across the state that were, that's been the way that they've, they've approached it and have been successful to a certain extent.
Thanks. And I just wanted to make, Elizabeth, did you want to come up here and say hello? And David Morris, although you have your crutches, did you want to? You're good, okay. I just think we haven't, I haven't formally met our new district attorney, but I just thought it'd be nice to have her up at the table here. And thank you for coming to City Hall.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Crossing the border between the county and the city, so.
Well, I appreciate that. I really do. I'm thankful I can, I'll just make a few comments. I'll be honest with you, I've only been in a few months, but I've been extremely excited to be part of these groups. I was on the New American Council call yesterday and got to, I was very humbled to be part of, just to hear the stories and just to learn the communication that's going on in the groups that are so passionate, especially about our kids. And I do appreciate that. I really appreciate it. Ms. Flores, correct? Your word genuine. I think that is, that really means a lot to me because I think that that's what I've seen in these discussions in the group is, these aren't, these aren't things that are being done just to be done or just to make pamphlets and look like we're doing something. I've truly seen a sincerity of heart with everyone that's been involved, and so I'm very excited to be part of this. I've got a lot to learn. I think I said that, was it last week as well? I know myself, I've got a lot to learn, and it does start with individuals. Just a little bit of background, I've been with the office since the end of 2001, so I've been around a long time. And I've done, solely done the child abuse cases for 17 years. So, it's no surprise, kids are my passion, and I appreciate Mr. Troop's comments about talking to them. Because I think we do a lot of meetings about the kids, but we don't meet with the kids. So, I'm hoping to do that. And I know these guys do, I've worked with them for, since day one. And I've had the privilege of seeing them, as Tammy was saying, things that they've done outside of the public eye and what they've done for kids, my, I call them my kids, the kids that I worked with for so many years. And they have gone above and beyond in just the efforts that they are making, transparency and commitment and dedication to the community is, it's just something I'm very, very proud to be part of. And now, I get to be in the community because I was behind a desk doing my cases for so many years, and so I really am overwhelmed with excitement to be part of this. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to come tonight and everyone's comments. So, I look forward to more conversations and meeting, meeting everyone a little more one-on-one. So, thank you.
So, you guys have had to sit quietly while the rest of us talked and observed and made recommendations. Anything that you would like to add here?
I'm going to jump ahead of the deputy here.
Okay.
Leave him for the final comments because I want everyone to be very aware that when we talked about the planning team, the pre-planning before even SPCP was involved, and every step of the way in this program, it was because of the deputy here that has put his heart and soul into it, along with Michael, to put those pieces together. As the chief, I get a lot of the credit for the good things that have been happening in the department, and it's obviously because I've got some great staff that have really dug in and done the hard work. I think that people need to realize that the department is constantly in change. We just hired nine people because nine people left. Every year, there's a turnover in the department. It's different because people that are doing a certain job this year are moving into another job next year. And you think about it in your careers, as things change, the department changes constantly. And you think about it in your careers, as things change, the department changes constantly. So when we hear comments that, well, 10 years ago this happened, well, it's, it's a different department. Personally, it gets frustrating that we're always trying to break down that barrier, but there's no way around it. So we have to go forward. And having a program like this come in, you know, I'm not a statistics expert. I can't, you know, create a program or do it the way these guys do it. But we're smart enough to rely on the experts, to have them come in, show us the way. Meeting the kids in the schools, from the middle schools to the high school, has been a fantastic two years now of doing this. Actually, we're in the third year of doing it. The responses we get are genuine and we hear a lot of good input. We hear a lot of, a lot of things. And we know that they like hearing from an adult that actually sits down and talks to them about things. Snack patrols, it's great to see the kids. But what's even better is when the parents come out with the kids to talk to us. It goes beyond just giving kids snacks. It's, yeah, it's meeting those kids, but it's also talking to the parents or the grandparents, whoever's watching the kids that day. So it's a very big project. It's something that's different in policing. It's not one community policing officer. Like I said, right now, over 80 officers are involved in our different programs. And that's on top of their regular duties. We all say that when the alarm sounds, we all go. I sent an email to council about Sunday afternoon. Every officer working had to leave, no matter what they were doing, to go handle issues. It's like that every day. And unfortunately, you know, it still continues. But I think for a community, this is extremely important. Very proud to keep, keep doing it. I've already told Charles and crew to come back in three years and do another survey so that we can continue to make sure we're on the right course. And leave it to Mike.
All right. So I appreciate everyone's input here. And I appreciate, I appreciate tough questions and I appreciate honesty. And we, that was one of the things I think that made the, this SPCP as successful as it's been. And that's because we had to go in with clear eyes and you had to have a commitment. You had to be willing to be honest. And you had to be willing to be objective and listen to others. And most of all, the one thing we don't really acknowledge a lot, it's to have courage. Because sometimes it takes that courage to push back on a narrative that might exist with, from within the community you represent. And there was that on the police side, and there was that on the community side. And I think that what, what has resulted over the course, over the evolution of the SPCP has been that the core members that have remained and have participated. Now, some, some fell off for different reasons. So it's a commitment. It's a lot of work. This isn't just, we're coming to have some meetings and we're going to talk about this and move on. We've, we've been driven to put all this into action. And we've had a lot of discussions. And I tell you, I give all the credit to Mike Outlaw as far as the driving force behind this. His, his commitment and dedication and, and energy has kept it going. You know, on the law enforcement side, I've been on 30 years. And we've had different programs start up and different, you know, with community policing back in the 90s was, we got a big grant for a, a big RV and we got some money to go out and do extra patrols. Just walk around, don't arrest anybody, but just walk around. So it, it didn't really have a lot of meaning. We were just told, go out and talk to people, that's all. It, it was hard to take seriously back then because there really was no, there was no, no one directing and saying, okay, what is community policing? It's, it's interacting with people. It's, it's getting to know people like the olden days when they had beat cops going around and they knew the neighborhood and they knew the, they knew the business owners. But what we've seen and what we've learned through all this process is, it's so much more than that. When we first started, we talked about, well, should we create a community policing unit? And, and that was kind of, we bounced it around. I mean, this is when we first took over as a police administration. We knew there was a need. But we realized, wait a minute, wait, let's stop, that's a wrong direction. We need a whole, our whole department to embrace community policing. And, and how do we do that? Well, we had to convince and bring along these, all these officers. And they had to see it in their leadership in the department. And I, I was a working, and so was the chief. We were working cops our whole career. He's done just about everything in a department. And, and I spent 25 of my years in a narcotics unit. And, you know, drug search warrants, drug arrests, drug investigations, the whole gamut, guns, drugs, everything. So we were always focused on the task. Our core, our core duty is to protect and serve. So it's easy to get lost into that. It's easy to pull back from any of that extra stuff and say, well, you know, we got a couple homicides we're working on, we really got to focus on that. So we're not going to be able to participate. We had to commit to do this through all that. And, and we've done that. And we've brought along the department. You know, some were easier than others, some still quite don't really buy into it. But we, we really convinced our, we didn't force them to participate in these things. We brought these officers on because, along because they saw the value in it. They saw how it could be put to work. And they got to meet some of these community members in a setting that was a, was a non-enforcement type of a situation. So we got to talk to people, we got to share some things, and we've gotten deep. We've had tough conversations. We've, we've argued, we've, we've, there's been tears shed at some of these meetings because we've had to acknowledge things. It's been painful sometimes. But we, but we stayed, we always focused on the goal. And that is, everyone's committed to increasing the, the, the trust and the relationship between the police and the community. So, and I'll just, I'll, I'll close it by just referencing one. And Mo, I'll bring this back to what you said earlier. We did have a, our first trust-building series, I'll bet you it was our first, right? Up at Erie High? I don't even think we called it that then, but, because this, we just kind of, this is, we built this as it's gone along. There hasn't been a roadmap past us forming a council and tackling these problems. So we've kind of made our own map going forward. But we did have, we had a, we sat down with the Protective Services. I don't know if they had, is that still a program? So we had at the time, because there, you know, there was talk about and they were going to be able to keep it, maintain it and so forth. But we had a group of kids in a class, and it was mostly females. It was, it was, I was surprised to see that, but mostly females. But a very diverse group as far as racial background, racial makeup. And there were some new Americans in the group. And, you know, we talked, we expected them to beat us up. You know, we expected them to hear, talk about how, how much they had. And we, we opened up, said, we want to hear. If you have any, any complaints or any criticisms or any things you need to say about police, we need to hear it. And, and their overriding concern was their own personal safety. Now, this was in the aftermath of a, a school shooting. So I guess that might have been fresh on everyone's mind. But when we asked them about who, who in this group wants to be a police officer? It was one or two that raised their hand. And like, this is Protective Services. Well, a lot, you know what a lot of kids express to us is, they've been bullied for even being in that program. And, and so what I, the reason I bring it back to that is, I think that, you know, we have to look at, it's a bigger picture. We have to look at what is, what is causing a lot of this? And it's not just something the police can fix on our own. We have to have buy-in from, from members of the community that have influence over these kids. We have to bring, convince them that, to convince these kids that this is, a career in policing is a noble career. It's a great career. It can, it can, it can, it can help you support your family and elevate your family. You know, we always want to have our kids do better than us. And we can, we have to make that an option for some of these kids. And I think that through the PAL program and the hard work, anyone that sees that PAL program can't deny that there's an improvement there with these kids. They didn't have that interaction with police before, but now they get it. And, and some of this may seem like, well, you know, we're the snack patrols. Okay, snack patrols, right? We laughed at it too. But you know what? It, it, it works. It's those things like that that people see us doing, they're like, oh my, these are real people. They're real people. You know, and so these kids and the, and the parents, like Michael said, or the chief said, you know, they, they do see a change. And they see, they look at us different, we look at them different. These officers have gone through the same process. You know, these officers feel more closely attached to, to, to a lot of these people, personally that they met. And I think it's, it also allows them to be more empathetic to some of the, some of the issues because they hear these individual kids, you know, stories. And it touches them. And so it helps officers also see and feel what, what the community needs. We heard it right from them. This SPCP summit, I like to throw, I like to call it a summit because that's kind of what it was. We heard from the community what they thought the problems were. It wasn't us telling them, okay, we, we know, we know there's problems. We're going to do this and that to fix it. We said, what do you think the problems are? And they, we were surprised. Many of them said, well, we want mental health for the police officers. We don't think, you know, we, police officers take care of themselves mentally. We know it's a stressful job. I expected just heavy criticism, but it wasn't that. It wasn't all that. And these were, these were tough, these were tough critics of the police. And if, you know, I'm sure we got the, the names of the participants and we can share that at some point. But these weren't handpicked people that were going to just go along with us because they, they weren't easy. They weren't easy, just like when we picked our officers to participate. I didn't pick officers that I knew were just going to go and smile and be nice. We picked officers, now, didn't make them do it. Again, I, I looked for volunteers. But we brought along some of our, our very active, they work high crime hours, are making a lot of arrests. They had complaints, numerous complaints filed against them over the years. We brought these officers to this thing so they could participate. And so all that work that went into it, I think it's a big success. And, and I, I look forward to continuing on with it. And I know we got a lot more to do, but we're doing it. We're working.
I want to thank everybody. And I also really want to thank council. We didn't, Mel Witherspoon isn't here tonight, but he also would bring good things to the table if he were here. He has a son who was a police officer and I think became a teacher, I think is. Anyhow, I learned so much from all of my council colleagues. I think there's a few people who didn't get a chance to speak, but I think we did pretty well. Are there any closing remarks from Michael or the mayor?
I'm really happy with what our police said. I'm not going to add anything else.
Like I said today during the press conference, the work to improve police and community relations is not for the faint of heart. Like you have to be locked in and storms will arise, but you have to be committed to the cause and realize it's not about us. It's the next generation's, is why we're doing what we're doing. And so that's it.
Yeah, sure.
I, I respect what you guys do a lot because I actually have two uncles that are retired police officers. One state police officer, Gerard, and I mean Lawrence Park, and then a Chicago city police officer. So the biggest thing that changed my mentality towards police, well, I never had a mentality towards police, but going, you know, my uncle in uniform, taking me out to Lawrence Park, meeting the guys. So I knew like my uncle, who was the next generation above me, was a police officer. So it was easy for me to have a good mentality towards police because I knew that I had two police in my family. So if you can get guys, maybe like, you know, you know, I know you're talking young kids, but man, if a kid could see his uncle that he respects, being, wearing a police uniform, taking them out to the barracks, meeting the guys, that's what changed my mentality towards, you know what I mean? So that's just something to think about.
Thanks, everybody. This required a commitment tonight. So thanks, everybody, for your patience and your good questions and your honest comments.